Action on it and voted two zero, so if it's valid, it's valid. But I just wanted to warn you about that.
So you'll you'll check on that and get back with him? And Maury's got something else to talk to you about too.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Uh, our next item would be street construction plans. Uh, first one's PP twenty-one seventeen Oak Grove Industrial. Petitioner owner is Oak Grove Industrial LLC by Walter L. Howard. It's approximately thirty-three point seven acres on the west side of Edworth Road, eight hundred feet south of the intersection of Oak Grove Road and Edworth Road. Ohio Township twenty-nine, twenty-six and nine. Advertised in the standard on December second of twenty twenty-one. The county engineer has reviewed the dollar amount and signed off on that part of it.
Bobby, are you okay?
Yeah, the street plans are in compliance with our ordinance, so I'd recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve street plans, uh, construction plans, PP twenty-one dash seventeen.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next one is PP dash twenty-one dash eighteen. It's Deer Creek Subdivision. Petitioner owner is KSPS Development LLC by Kurt Phillips, the agent. Approximately thirty-eight point one acres on the east side of Stevenson Station Road, zero feet southeast of the intersection formed by Ayrshire Road and Stevenson Station Road. Campbell Township twenty-nine, five and nine, and thirty-two, five and nine. It was advertised in the standard December second of twenty twenty-one. They're requesting no improvements to Ayrshire Road and Stevenson Station Road, but they have filed plans for the shared driveways as part of this development.
Anything to add, Ms. Maury?
Nope, just gonna answer any questions.
Bobby?
I recommend approval. The shared driveways are in, uh, general compliance with the whole area. They they have several lots, so the west side of the road has shared drive, so.
This is the shared drives on the right-hand side of the road.
Yeah, so they'll have a a common pipe and then a shared drive on the every other lot line.
Okay.
We're we have a dollar amount for that to be held until those are constructed. Those will be constructed by the developer in this case.
So is that gonna be, is that gonna be a solid pipe there to there?
Yeah, no, it's just a thirty feet of pipe or whatever underneath each drive.
Okay.
So it's open ditch and then you just put a pipe in.
Okay, okay.
On every other lot line.
Okay, I didn't know how, okay.
Any further questions, Commissioner, sir?
I don't think I have any. I make a motion to approve the, uh, street construction plans for PP twenty-one dash eighteen.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is PP twenty-one nineteen Golden Pond Estates. Petitioner owner is Glenn E. and Judith A. Hessman. Approximately thirteen point nine seven acres on the north side of Titzer Road, nine hundred and fifty feet east of the intersection formed by Titzer Road and St. John's Road. Being lots one C and two B and St. John's Titzer subdivision. Campbell Township thirty-two, five and nine. Advertised in the standard on December second of twenty-one, and they're requesting no improvements to Titzer Road or St. John's Road.
Mr. Howard?
Recommend approval.
You good with it, Bob?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, street construction plans for PP twenty-one dash nineteen.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Next is PP twenty-one twenty High Point Center North, section five PUD. Petitioner owner is Ortiz, uh.
Ayala.
Ayala, okay, LLC by Melvin Ortiz, the owner. Approximately three point four four streets located on the north side of High Point Drive, zero feet northeast of the intersection by High Point Drive and Bell Road. Being a replat of lot one in High Point Center North, section four PUD, and part of lot forty in High Point Center North, section two. It's Ohio Township twenty-two, six and nine. It was advertised in the standard December second of twenty-one. They're requesting no improvements to Bell Road and to High Point Drive.
So I can tell you, this is Jim Marley, junior project engineer. Uh, this is two fully developed lots. One of them is the Acapulco Restaurant, and the other one, I think, is like a Mister Detail or something like that. And we're just all we're doing is adjusting the lot line between those two lots to put all of the lakes on the, um, Acapulco lot. And so no new.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve the PP twenty-one dash twenty.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maury.
Thank you.
We have some subdivision control ordinance amendments. These were advertised in the standard. And they went to the area planning commission. They're advertised October twenty-eighth. Um, and the planning commission met. The first one is the ordinance to amend Article twelve B, Planned Unit Development PUD, section two, general requirement subsection A. Permitted uses in PUD district of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance in effect for Wart County, Indiana. The purpose of this ordinance is to add con and ag to the PUD districts in the Wart County Comprehensive Plan. Excuse me, Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. The APC gave unanimous positive recommendation to the commissioners at their meeting held on November eighth of twenty-one.
Have you had time to review these, Commissioner, or?
Um, I have. I've looked at them, Bob. I don't, um. I I don't think I have any issues with them.
No, we we formed a committee out of APC between Molly, uh, Counselor, um, Dahl, myself, Amanda Mostman.
And these are actually in addition to what we did in the committee. This this is one we talked about, um, adding the agricultural and the conservancy to the PUDs. So as part of that, we had to do it in a couple different places in the ordinance to make them all match.
So I I have no issues with it. It helps streamline things and helps make things in APC a little bit smoother and easier.
So an ordinance to amend, okay, solicitors not. Okay, got it.
Thirty-eight, Christine?
Yes, sir, it is.
And again, we'll just have to look as to the, uh, effective date on a vote of two to zero, if that's what the commissioners do.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the, um, subdivision control ordinance amendment for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one goes with the first one. It's ordinance to amend Article twelve Recreation Conservancy Con. I'm sorry, it's seven. Recreation Conservancy Con District, section one, Use and Regulations of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance in Effect for Wart County. This was to add the PUD as permitted use in the con zoning in the Wart County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, and the APC gave unanimous positive recommendation at their November eighth meeting as well.
This would be ordinance thirty-nine.
Yep.
Motion. I make a motion to approve, um, the amendment, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one's the ordinance to amend Article seven Agricultural A District, section one, Use and Regulations of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance in Effect for Wart County, Indiana. This was to add PUD as a permitted use in the A zoning in the, uh, Wart County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, and it received a unanimous positive recommendation on November eighth from the APC.
This would be ordinance forty.
You good with it, Bob?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Our last one's ordinance to amend Article seven B Planned Unit Development PUD, section eight. Submission of Subdivision Plot, subsection C, Recording a Final Plot of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance in Effect for Wart County. The purpose of this ordinance was to amend the final plot timeline for PUDs to three years from the one year that is currently in the zoning ordinance. The APC gave unanimous positive recommendation at their meeting on November eighth of twenty-one.
Why was that, Bob, increase?
It's it's actually a decrease.
Well.
It says PUDs to three years from one year.
The ordinance has one year in it now.
Uh huh.
And this is for just PUDs. But we've been practicing the same as we would for a primary plat, which is five.
Oh, okay.
So we wanted to make it.
Okay.
Consistent.
Cons- a little more consistent.
I see, okay.
Thank you for bailing me out on that.
Understood. All right. So this ordinance number is forty-one?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the amendment, amend ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-one.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's all for the area planning commission.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
You got enough.
Next up, we have approval of minutes for November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Hang on, Bob, I agree to organize here. I think I'm okay with them. You good with them?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have our county administrator. Roger, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to announce that on this table over here, we have Wart County, Indiana, voluntary Title VI Public Involvement Survey. Anyone be interested in helping the counties, uh, compliance with our Title VI, uh, implementation plan, feel free to fill those out and return it to this office. My first item I have is a firewall refresh quote from Keller Schrader. It's number zero zero four four six four, version three. Uh, I emailed the commissioners a copy of that on November twenty-third. The quote is for thirty-four thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents. Dan replied that same day that he was okay with it, and Terry signed it. It was supposed to be on the consent agenda, but for some reason it's not, so, uh. I did find out from Dave Woolen this morning that EMA still hasn't received the signed grant agreement that will pay for this, but they haven't received notification that it's been approved. So you need a separate motion to approve this.
Okay, I make a I make a motion to, or Commissioner Johnson, you good with it?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the firewall quote from Keller Schrader.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the continuing, uh, issue that American Land Holdings or Peabody, uh, regarding the extension of the agreement for temporary road closure for one point three two miles of Tecunsee Road and zero point three two mile of E B Road in Hart Township. Jim McKean, who's the land manager out there for Peabody's Wild Boar Mine, uh, he sent an email on December second, and I sent that to you that same day in in attachment. He basically stated the reason they need the closure to be extended or requesting it to be extended is the affected roadways are still in use and not fully reclaimed or restored. And per the current agreement, we did receive their check in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for the E B Road closure. That goes into the one of your discretionary line items in highway donation fund.
Roger, if you don't mind, I would like to table this one until our next meeting.
Certainly.
Um, Commissioner Philippi is reaching out to American Land Holdings with a request, and I'd like to entertain that request before we agree to this temporary road closure.
Need a motion to table.
Um, I I have a question before I make that motion. So that check for twenty-seven forty-nine fifty-five, is that is that for the anticipation of the enclosure, or is that for what's been?
No, that's.
Is that retroactive?
To the agreement that's in place right now.
Right now?
Right.
Has nothing to do with the.
For all of next year. That's the amount they pay for twenty twenty-two.
Is that, is, do you check those figures, Bobby? When when they come in, that they're paying us what?
Yeah. Obviously, when they they give a check in the beginning, when they first close it, and then so each subsequent titans for the following.
Okay.
So let's hang on to that one until we approve or?
I make a motion to table, uh, the extension, uh, agreement for a road closure.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That'll be on your December twenty-seventh agenda then.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, um, I don't know if there's any anything I need to add there. The board would just need a motion to, uh, I I did talk regarding the written permission to be allowed to trap on county property. Todd prepared the Hold Harmless, and I think it's an indemnification agreement also. And, uh, Todd stated that that would serve as his written permission.
Hey, one one question about that. I know Bobby had concern. What what are we dealing, Bobby's? How are we doing with your concern about location and, you know, with, they got one at the edge, road edge or something, and we mow it down with a mower?
Yeah, I'd ask to be notified before that wherever they put it down.
I think that should be.
That's an excellent idea.
I think that should be part of the agreement, that he has to notify and and give a map to to Bobby so he can give to our mowers.
I need a list of locations, and I need to know how long of a term we're willing to grant.
I I I think there needs to be a map drawn so Bobby can give to that mower, so he knows when he's going down that road, he need to, I mean, don't you think, Bobby?
Yeah.
Because I can just see it now, we're gonna be mowing up tra- uh, cages or traps.
Yeah, the exhibit A currently has no locations on it, so. Uh, I'd have to, I just, I guess we continue this to your next meeting, and I get with Mr. Taylor and ask him to submit that.
Can can we approve this with 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 the with the condition that he submits that what we're requesting to Roger?
You certainly can, and you just also have to tell me how long of a term is this agreement?
I don't know, Bobby, how, um, or the agreement with him?
With him. How long? Is it a six month? Is it a three month? Is it a year?
Is it?
I do an annual.
We'll do it on a renewal, uh, annual, that he has to come back from front of the Board of Commissioners.
I think that's probably best, annual.
Yeah.
Season to season.
Right, and there there's there's probably verbiage in there that he can, Bobby can cancel this agreement if it creates issues. Or or we got, we're gonna have something in there where if 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 you're gonna, what happens if you maintain a road or or we're gonna do roadside ditch? He has to have the ability to call him up, say, don't don't trap anything here.
Right.
So I I'd like to give Bobby Bobby the authority to, um.
I agree.
I don't want him to have to come back, I don't want to have to come back to Board of Commissioners to get a trap cage removed or something. I think Bobby needs to have that authority.
So should should Bob and Dan sign this today, or does it need amending?
I would suggest you pull it off the consent and table it at the next meeting.
Got you.
Okay. Does that need to be a motion?
Consent says, pull it off of consent.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Got you. And then you need a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Spring, uh, can the outdoor lighting? I make a motion to approve the, uh, remaining consent agenda.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Uh, I would add that, uh, Heather took, uh, a request, a pandemic relief fund request form. It's number twenty-one dash sixty-one from the Health Department. Uh, their administrator, Aaron Brand, submitted that. It's in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. I talked to Councilman Richmond prior to the meeting, and he stated now that everything is itemized, and he's got all the information, he's okay with this. I don't know if Dan set a chance to review or not.
I I've reviewed it, but Greg Greg and I had spoke about it, and he had a lot of questions, and he he was gonna, uh, submit the email to Aaron.
Okay.
And 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 I read that, but I I have not spoke with Greg, so he spoke with you. So if Greg's good with it, then then I'm good with it.
And he told me he was.
Okay, all right.
Now Greg's in, and correct, Greg? Yeah. So you're okay with that?
I if Mr. Richmond is, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'd recommend a motion to approve twenty-one dash sixty-one pandemic relief request.
I make a motion to approve pandemic relief twenty-one sixty-one.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
County acquisitions, Miss Severs, how are you this evening?
I am good, thank you.
You're doing a lot of work for so few of.
Cheers. Thank you, Jerry.
So pursuant to, uh, Indiana Code five twenty-two dash six for services, uh, we received, uh, the first bid for the Wart County Uniform Contract. This is the second invitation to quote, which was submitted on November twenty-ninth after all bids were tabled in the commissioners' meeting on November eighth, and then it was denied on, um, November twenty-second. We received only one bid from UniFirst Corporation, which I have provided to the commissioners on the bid register. I've also attached two references for review along with the original invitations to quote from November the eighth. Uh, UniFirst Corporation is the county's current uniform provider. We have asked, um, the company to bid for a total of eight uniforms, five at the, um, County, uh, Highway Department, one at the Sheriff's Department, and two for our maintenance gentleman here. And I am confident the commissioners will select the quote that they feel is best and be in the best interest of Wart County. Any questions, gentlemen?
Not a lot to choose from here.
It is over four dollars cheaper per.
It is. I noticed that it went down from the last quote. Bobby, these are mostly your guys, so.
They want uniforms. This is what, if they want the uniforms, this is what they've got.
But this is the one who's doing it now.
Right. Right.
And I've had my.
Some complaints.
I've had my ear bent once and people are not happy, but.
Here's.
Bobby, what's your thoughts with it? Are those justified or, I mean, legitimate concerns or?
If there's a problem, usually it could be worked out, so.
Let the individual has it got it worked out?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they need my assistance for that or something, they could come to the office.
Okay.
But I don't find out about these issues until, well, after the fact.
Until they complain to the commissioner about it.
Evidently.
Here here's an option, and and that is that we deny this one bid and let the guys choose who they want to go through themselves.
And 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 I ask about that, but the only thing is they're not gonna get this pricing, correct?
That's correct.
They wouldn't. What kind of pricing they gonna get?
Well, I don't know. Do you do you have an idea?
No, but I'd be happy to reach out and ask.
Well, you've done enough work on this, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, I.
You got eight people, eight individuals.
And is this is this a one-year deal, Sherry?
It's three-year. It it's hard to get anybody to quote that little of amount for only one year because they've got so much cost involved. You know, they'll they'll lose money on a one-year contract, so three years is the minimum.
Is there an annual increase included?
That, I can't answer, Bobby, I'm sorry. But, um, UniFirst did come in at thirty-one thirteen per week. Previously, Aramark came in at thirty-five forty-two per week, and Centas came in at thirty, you might as well say, uh, thirty-nine dollars a week.
Counselor, if, I mean, if Bobby gets a bunch of negative feedback, let's say, at six months, a year into this, is there is there a way we can we can get out of it? I mean, if it's if it's to, if he's not able to work things out, is there?
Have they submitted a contract?
There's a contract that will be submitted, and it's got some language in it in regards to that.
Yeah.
And we could amend it as necessary also.
Yes, before him. I can't remember what the contract said.
It was either thirty or sixty day written notice of termination.
By either party?
Yes.
It's like ninety days.
Well, I mean, but.
He can terminate, apparently, if Roger recollects.
Yeah.
Okay.
Find out pretty quickly, but.
I make a motion to approve the lowest bid or the only bid.
I'll second that. So all in favor?
Aye, thank you, sorry.
I'll reach out to UniFirst, get that contract, and get it to you then, Todd, for your review. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda needing to be addressed is, uh, an ordinance establishing, uh, boundaries for county council districts. That would be, uh, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. And, um, if I may just briefly, uh, mention to you that, uh, this is pursuant to, uh, Indiana Constitution, uh, and comes every ten years after, uh, the census, uh, has been completed. And I have the proposed ordinance, uh, that I'll hand to the two of you.
Todd, you want me to offer copies of my packages?
Certainly. We also have, uh, uh, handouts for anybody that would like to see them, uh, which is the proposed council districts. Uh, it, uh, probably, if it's what you're passing out, Roger, includes the existing current council districts, one, two, three, and four, uh, with the listed populations and population deviation percentages, and the proposed council districts for twenty, uh, twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two going forward, with each, uh, council district's precincts listed. Mr. President, um, I know that I've been discussing with the board, uh, these council districts and the compliance with the Indiana Constitution. That rule is that, uh, the population, uh, in each district needs to be equal. Uh, and the Indiana courts have interpreted equal to be within ten percent of each other. Currently, the, um, existing council districts, uh, have a population deviation of forty-five point two percent, which is well beyond, uh, the constitutional limits. The boundaries that you have in front of you that, uh, you have discussed and you are considering, uh, lists the three council districts, population ranging between fifteen thousand four seventy-eight to the highest, uh, sixteen thousand four thirteen, with a deviation of only five point five, uh, percent, a reduction of almost thirty-seven percent deviation.
You said three, but there are four districts. I don't get a chance to correct the council.
All right, if I said three districts, I. Alright, if I said three districts, I misspoke. I've got four listed right in front of me. The ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, Warwick County, Indiana, amending Chapter 131 of the Code of Ordinances lists the requirements for setting council districts and would amend Section 30.15 to list the correct precincts in which the four districts are comprised. It would be effective January 3rd, 2022. All passed by the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County. This would most likely be approved today on first reading since we will not be able to have a unanimous vote of the board. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We have been in communication with the President of the Council, Mr. Richmond, and Councilmember Ron Bacon, liaison from the Council on this issue, describing the boundary changes. It certainly is an opportunity to adopt some boundaries that make a lot more sense than the current ones. Especially, I would personally, just from my own legal opinion, it seemed like City of Booneville in Ohio Township were quite chopped up. The way Chandler and the boundaries around Chandler have been existing, again, very chopped up. And the board has discussed with me in looking at these boundary lines to just simply look at making the boundaries more sensical and looking at the population numbers and making them compliant with the Constitution. And if there are no other questions, you have the ordinance 2021-42 establishing county council districts, ready for you to entertain a motion to approve on first reading.
Any questions?
Nope.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-42 for the county council districts on first reading.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. President. I'll see what we're looking at as far as a timeline to get the second reading approved and I'll advise you. Secondly, proposed ordinance 2021-43 would be an ordinance of Board of County Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, amending Chapter 131 of the Code of Ordinances of Warwick County, establishing county commissioner districts. In looking at the county commissioner districts, you advised me to prepare an ordinance not making any changes to those district lines. However, this ordinance is required by the Constitution to be reviewed and passed by the Board of Commissioners, listing the applicable precincts that go into each commissioner district. Of course, you've changed some of these precincts, so these lists are updated and compliant with the Constitution and ready for your vote and approval ordinance 2021-43.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-43 establishing the county commissioner districts.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Give me a moment. I've got two ordinances here for the Commissioners. Okay, I'm good. Sorry, Mr. Vice President. Too many pieces of paper. Next item on our agenda, Mr. Vice President, is order establishing precincts. This board has previously already approved the updates to the precinct boundaries in Warwick County in prior meetings. This is just an order establishing precincts stating that you have complied with those requirements and simply a requirement that you move and pass the order establishing precincts so ordered this 13th day of December 2021.
Make a motion to approve the order of establishing precincts for Warwick County.
I'll second. All in favor?
That's already been passed. This is an order establishing precincts, just documenting the prior approval by the Board of the establishment of precincts in conjunction with the election division. If you have any questions, Ms. Stevens, I'll certainly be happy to talk with you about them. Did we get to a vote?
No. You, you made the motion.
To approve, yes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, the amendment to independent contractor agreement for County Grants Development Director. This independent contractor agreement was previously entered into. This is just an amendment in clarification updating Exhibit A to the independent contractor agreement detailing the services that the Warwick County Grants Development Directors to provide the county and it includes the services to administer, supervise, review, and perform other management services incidental to the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds received by Warwick County under the American Rescue Plan Act. And that just brings an independent contractor agreement up to date and reflective of the Grants Development Directors' role and duty.
Do you need anything? Any motion or?
Yes, just a motion to approve that change to the independent contractor agreement.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the Health Savings Account, County Contribution Policy. I have a resolution, a number, I'm sorry, Stevens.
That needs to be corrected in 2021. I show 2020 on my copy unless I got.
Oh, okay, we must have fixed that already, Roger.
The resolution number would be 2021-18.
This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, establishing a policy for contributions to county employees' health savings accounts, resolving by the Board of Commissioners that an ineligible employee of Warwick County, if they elect to participate in the county's Health Insurance, HSA, plan option, regardless of the employee's health insurance coverage for the coverage period, then in that event, Warwick County shall make the following contributions towards said employee's HSA plan on a quarterly basis. Employee only, $40.01 per quarter. Employee and spouse, $97 per quarter. Employee and children, $158.08 per quarter. And the policy adopted this date, I presume, would be effective January 1st? I think, January 1st. And this would be added to the other employment policies of the county.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-18 establishing the contributions to the county employees' health savings account.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Vice.
Now, that doesn't have to, that doesn't have to be, that's not first reading, that's approved.
That's, that's good. That's a resolution approved to the zero. I don't believe I have everything, Roger can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a contract with Wilson Family Practice for the provision of services to Warwick County. My understanding is that we're still working on that.
That's correct, and Heather has confirmed that.
So I would ask the Commissioners to simply table that, I believe, to your next meeting.
Make a motion to table the Wilson Family Practice contract to our next meeting of December 27.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Lastly, Ms. Vice President, just to do a housekeeping matter, I believe, we have, Sherry has been receiving quotes, smaller job quotes from Ralph Simpson Services and seeking invitations to bid for those services, including some repair work in the old courthouse. And she's been having difficulty obtaining the three quotes in order to proceed with those projects, the small projects that they are. We have one job quote for, Sherry can maybe help me with this a little bit, but one is, I believe, the Grants Development Director's office. And more recently, a second quote, again, under the same circumstances, for additional work, I believe, in the Health Department.
Yes, I don't believe the Health Department's up there, but I think that other quote we have is for the break room, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and, and I've talked to Commissioner Philippi about that. We're probably gonna, we're probably gonna revisit that.
Okay.
I, I think we're, we're gonna, we're gonna re, we might not go as extensive with that.
Okay.
Regarding the work in the Grants Development Director's Office, that is, even though that work has been initiated, that's a contract that you should approve under Section 31.08 of the County Ordinances, Section E under Services, which you haven't done yet.
So we need to approve that for the.
Correct.
For the, for the grant writers.
Correct.
Okay, so I make a motion to, you know, yeah, I make a motion to approve. Have you been down there? I make a motion to approve that, would, would it be, would it be a policy, Todd, or?
Just approve the quoted services under 31.08E of the ordinances.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
You're welcome, sir. Next up, we have Highway Engineer, Bobby.
Thank you. The first item I have is the vendor openings of the District 1 Highway/Stormwater Facility. We received five sealed bids. Did you, I think there's bid tabs maybe up here? Is there a bid tab form that you have?
Okay, does everybody have a copy of that?
Oh, yes.
Jason's here with Lamar.
Jason passed those out.
Okay.
Okay.
Do, do, you guys want a copy of it?
Do you have any other copies? Thank you.
Anybody else up here need one?
First one I have is Dan Coed construction. I hope he's getting some life. Careful. The certification and base bid is $1,745,000.
$1,745?
And then if we go with the aluminized steel fencing, it's a deduction of $3,000.
It's a deduction?
Yes.
Versus the coated, the black coated?
Yes.
Wow. Interesting.
I'll look through the rest of it too. See if there are requirements in here. The next one I have is from.
Don't touch yourself, Bobby.
Touch yourself, Bobby? Worried about somebody getting flamed.
I must admit, I've been eyeing that darn thing all movie.
Again, this one is arc construction.
Who is it?
Arc construction. And the galvanized, or the aluminized steel fencing is a deduction of $9,460. This one is from Regal Incorporated. And this one is for $2,200,000. And the aluminized fencing is a deduction of $9,463. $2,200,000, I believe.
Correct.
The next one is KM Construction Services. Where are they at, Bobby? County Line Road. $2,020,000. And it is a deduction of $5,000 for the fencing steel. And the last bid is Empire Contractors. And this bid for Empire Contractors is $1,844,000. $1,844,000. And subtract. Looks like a, a deduct of $10,000. I just recommend we take the bids under advisement for review.
For responsible bidder and responsiveness.
Yeah.
I make a motion to take the five bids that we received under advisement.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
The last item I have is change order number 14 for Bell Road. This is for line removal for $525.
Well, Bobby, that was line removal?
Yes. This was due to some of the existing lanes that we tied into. The new striping didn't line up with those lanes, and it wasn't in the plan to remove the old, the old line. It was overlooked. So this is $525.
I make a motion to approve the change order number 14.
I'll reluctantly second. All in favor?
Aye.
That is all I have. Thank you.
I lost my agenda. All right. Roger, anything?
No.
Commissioner Saylor, you got anything to add?
I got a couple of things. One, just, just for, make sure people know the outdoor lighting project is behind the JC, those original lights. We have, if you notice that, we have put in a retaining wall to fix some drainage issues there that plague us not only all spring, but winter long, whenever we get a rain, it cools down there. So I think we've got that issue fixed and addressed. We've made a little area out there for the employees where they can sit, you know, maybe at lunchtime or break time, which is nice. Sherri's been doing a lot of work on getting bids and quotes for our canopy replacements. So Sherri, thank you for that. I think the project's looking great so far and just a nice addition, and the lighting will be a nice addition. The other thing I just want to ask is, you know, we keep our friends to the south of us in thoughts and prayers. That was, I followed that, that event from the startup, and that was why I saw the firsthand destruction of a hurricane in Florida here a few years ago or a couple of years ago. That, that's some major, major damage. And I just hope when people build big buildings that they build safe areas in them for employees can go. I think that's something that we need to look at as commissioners to put in, into our building code, that we require safe areas in big buildings. Because they're just building this transsteel building. By the way, that, the building quote that you, that we're doing, Bobby, has a, has a reinforced room in it. And that's, that's in case, we've had several tornadoes go through that area, and that's in case, that's for one reason, one reason only, to protect employees in case something's bearing down on them. So, anyway, that's all I have, Bobby.
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to announce to everybody, if you don't know, that at the recent Annual Indiana Association of County Commissioners Conference, this board received the award for outstanding team effort for Board of County Commissioners based on two projects. One is this courthouse renovation project, which has really created a wonderful centerpiece for County C of Warwick County. And secondly, for their insight into getting a comprehensive capital improvement plan and program, which was done by a local consultant. So congratulations, Commissioners, it's well deserved.
Thank you.
Well, now that Roger said that, I gotta add something to it. You know, while the commissioners got recognition for that, you know, there were several other people, you know, that, that probably, or not probably, they were behind the scenes that, that made it happen. And of course, from our legal counsel to Roger, was involved in almost every meeting of it. Brad Downing, our head of maintenance, and our building inspector.
Dennis.
Dennis. Dennis Lockhart. So, you know, those guys don't get the recognition, you know, that maybe that we got, but however, they deserve the recognition because, you know, when you have, we didn't have, we didn't, our taxpayers were not charged, you know, $100,000 to have a project, you know, owner's rep or supervisor on site every day. We, we did that by having six to eight sets of eyes on those guys every day. And I think, I think if the truth be known, they're glad the project's over. While they think it's a good project, I know before Commissioner Johnson agreed to sign the contract, he wanted a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of items thrown into it. They, they basically did that. And so we squeezed them pretty hard, but I think ultimately, we got a good project done for the taxpayers of this county. And we continue to get compliments on a daily basis. But ultimately, I think it is a great team effort. And I think Roger and everybody who was involved in it, from our office staff to, to, I mean, even Bobby and Steve, you know, helped on, on terms of the thing, so.
And to council for appropriating, getting the bond in place.
I guess we got it.
Even though we wanted more money, it turned out really nice.
So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And I agree with that. And I also wanted to, you know, touch on, please remember our folks are, I think all of us probably know somebody that's been hit by this extreme damage that was done this weekend. So please keep everybody in your prayers and, you know, that could have very easily hit us as well. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh two?
I've got five oh one on my.